Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, Lord, has continued to shower this city, oh God. Thank you for your blessings, God. Lord, we thank you, oh God. You've been so good, you've been so kind, you've been so merciful, God. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor and we give you praise because it all belonged to you. You have brought us so far from last year to this year, God. And we lost a lot, but we gained a lot, and we thank you, oh God. We lost a lot of family members and we lost a lot of coworkers, but God, you have blessed us, and we thank you for keeping us, oh God. We give you glory this afternoon. We lift you up in this business, oh God. Lord, look on each council member, look on the mayor, continue lead and guide each and every one of us, oh God. Touch us, oh God. Cover us with your blood, lift us with your love. Let your spirit dwell in each and every one of us, oh God. Save in the mind of your spirit, oh God. We thank you right now, God, because you've been good and you've been kind, oh God. You see anything that shouldn't be, take it out. Take it out, oh God. Fill us more with your word, God. Give us more of your understanding, oh God. Wrap us, oh God. Tighten us up when we too loose, loosen us up when we too tight. Let us keep our focus on you as we rule this city, God, and lead it like you want it to be led, oh God. We bless your holy name, oh God. If anything is not right, you fix it, oh God. You fix it, oh God. And Lord, we thank you right now, God. Cover us with your blood, lift us with your love, wrap us in your mercy, oh God. Teach us how to walk in your way. Teach us how to talk in your way, God. Lord, you lift this city up. Continue to bless it, oh God. Continue to let loose, oh God, that things that should be. And we thank you right now, God, for our first responders, our fire department, our police department, our sanitation department. Keep them safe, oh God. We thank you right now, God. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Let's face the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor McQuinlan?
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson?
Here.
City Treasurer Charlie Suter, Jr. Counselor Kat?
Here.
Counselor Kroom?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Holt?
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Here.
Counselor Mohammed? Counselor Monday?
Here.
Counselor Murray?
Here.
Counselor Willis?
Here.
Yes, sir.
Seven present, two not here right now. You all see the bid opening with the West Memphis Utility Department for roof repairs and plant building as well as seventy dollar improvement bids. You all see this? Can I get the motion in a second to approve and refer him back?
Refer him back to administration, yes.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Could we have Mr. Wembish come up and explain this in a six, explain the Family Dollar? Because when you read Family Dollar approved, it...
There's a streets.
Mr. Wembish, would you come up and explain this roof repair?
Philip, Philip and Amanda, they can come and explain it.
It's not a, we're not any dollar approved.
I know, but there's two bid requests on here.
Roof repairs.
What's up, the utility staff? Open bids yesterday for roof repairs to its warehouse and superintendent office space. It's leaking, you know. Ask them to come down and see it. It's in, we need, we need it replaced. And the low bidder is a local company that turned in a very aggressive bid. And we'd like to request that it be turned over to the utility commission for their meeting next Thursday.
Thank you, Ward.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We let bids for the Family Dollar Parkway improvements earlier this month, and we got back those bids last Thursday. Well, it was just one bid. From the facilities board, they have approved for us to use up to eighty-five thousand dollars. And from the overlay budget that we used to repair this road, it's been in disrepair for the past seven years that I have been here. It's just, it's gotten really extremely tore up ever since Carvana construction, and it's just a good asset to our economic development. I did two alternative bids on this, one for doing the whole road and one for doing like a little bit of patchwork. And they both came in extremely over budget. We had planned on this being around three hundred thousand dollars. The first alternative bid from Crisp was three sixty-five, one seventy-nine. And his, for alternative, for alternative to, it was four hundred forty-five, four hundred forty dollars. Four hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred forty dollars. And like I said, we are using from the overlay budget, and we would like enough to repair some local streets also. So we came back to Crisp and asked them to keep it under, you know, three hundred thousand. What could we repair with that budgetary number? And that's what you see in front of you, is that number, that's under three hundred thousand.
Funds are coming from two separate accounts, industrial and the overlay project.
Correct. So up to eighty-five thousand dollars is coming from the facilities board.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, those two counts combined are a little over six million dollars.
He brought it from the facilities board, and that's what they...
Facilities board has sufficient funding.
Correct.
It's number eighty-five.
Right.
And we can handle the transaction however you view it. And Charlie want to handle that, whether to do it under city contract and facilities board reimburse you the eighty-five.
Sure, okay.
And the way we resolve this issue right here, even though we're, the scope of work has changed just a little bit, I went through Mike Stevenson. We did a supplemental agreement for this, for the described work that you see itemized currently.
So again, this is, is this, this is not for the complete?
No, it's right there at the front.
Yeah, I know where you're talking about.
Yes, it's extremely broken up right there. But it is for undercutting that area and replacing the concrete. I think it's eight inches of concrete, twelve inches of backfill.
To your question. We actually change ordered the bid to get it under three hundred thousand dollars, which is more in line with what Amanda and I had budgeted for the work. Again, the bids came in a little higher, quite a lot higher than what we anticipated. And there are some other repairs on the road out there that need to be made, but we decided that rather than try to tap into the overlay budget any further, we'd delay those for another year and take care of those in twenty-twenty-two. Because they're not as bad as the section where Family Dollar ties into Mid-America Boulevard. That section, it was deteriorated before the Carvana project came on. And as you all know, there were a lot of construction truck hauling in and out of there over the past year, and it just accelerated the damage to the road.
If I may, how many acres does the city still have left in the park?
We have a little over eighty acres left, sixty in a tract that is north of now the completed Family Dollar Drive. And then there's a twenty acre parcel in the southeast corner of the site. It's probably a little less marketable than the sixty that we have on the developed park. But it's a good sixty acre site now with full utilities and road infrastructure for prospect.
But this is the excess for that site?
Correct.
This road?
Correct, yes.
So, and again, by the way, you were talking about lower project, which is what, six hundred twenty thousand for this year? Okay.
Yeah, I drove through there a couple of weeks ago, and it does need some repairing.
All right, hearing nothing else, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I refer those back. Can I get the motion in a second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Was there any corrections to the minutes?
I had sent mine in earlier this week, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Mr. Attorney, you saw old business, please?
This is third reading of an ordinance to amend Section Three Employment, subtitle Jury Duty of the Employee Handbook of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Hearing that read for the third time, can I get the motion in a second to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Ms. Clerk, would you get that ordinance, I mean, yeah, that ordinance and number, please?
Yes, ma'am. Just want to confirm Tracy first and Kroom second.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Thank you very much. Okay, that ordinance number will be two-five-seven-four.
Two, two-five-seven-four?
Yes, sir.
New business, can I get a motion in a second to read by Tylo?
R-one and O-one, yes, sir.
Any second?
Clicking.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Mr. Attorney, R-one?
R-one is a resolution approving revisions to the policy and procedure manual for the West Memphis Fire Department and for other purposes.
The chief informed me that he would like for us to table that indefinitely. Can I get a motion, second to table?
So moved.
So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled.
I mean, Charles Willis made the first motion, Kroom made the second.
That's good.
All right. Mr. Attorney, O-one?
O-one is an ordinance to amend Section Two Work Culture, subtitle Nepotism of the Employee Handbook of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Now, suspend the rules and places on the second reading? Motion in a second? Second, all right. All in favor, aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Excuse me?
If I may, Mr. Kroom opposed that.
Okay.
Mayor, as we discussed pre-council, whether this proceeds through or not, I would, I'd just assume table this until HR has had a chance to tell us what other cities are doing. And if that's two weeks or four weeks, I think HR should, should review that policy.
You all want to restrain your, let me just table indefinitely until HR come back?
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
I guess.
That's the movement from the motion I already had, okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now can I get a motion in a second to table it indefinitely until the, to the HR come back?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled, thank you. All right, we request permission to allow the mayor to borrow up, up to four hundred and sixty thousand from the reserve account to purchase a building from Art Realty, which is the old Fred's building. Can I get a motion, second to approve?
So moved.
May I make a motion to amend?
Okay.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Second. Second.
And then mayor, as, as we stated pre-council, we can get all the bid information. Still want to make sure we get as much in your court to make a solid bid as possible. Once you get all that data, we can meet in an hour or two hours, notification of press, and you can say, okay, here's everything that I have, here's the number. And we can adjust, but not as, if we don't have the number, I'm more comfortable at two fifty. But once we get the number, that may change.
So Counselor Kat, what you're saying now is that you want to amend that from four sixty to two fifty?
Yes, ma'am.
Until you get all of the necessary data?
I'm comfortable at two fifty without the data.
Okay, now...
Certainly, we might have a new roof, new AC.
Right. Now, if we need more, then we'll make an amendment to add more as needed. Is that what you're saying?
Once he has that data, we can meet in two hours and take care of it.
Okay, before I agree, I want to ask City Attorney, do you think with the moves up to two fifty, they would take that, Lord?
Well, I don't think we know what, what, have any idea what they will take because it's going to have to be subject to the approval of the bankruptcy court. I have no idea what the status of that is at this point. Typically, the trustee has to present something before the bankruptcy judge to have it approved. This is a bankruptcy that's not in this state, it's in another state. I can't recall what state it's in, and I've gotten plenty of documentation from them. I don't think there's any way we'd know what they'd be willing to accept at this point, so I don't know that I can answer that.
So I guess my question that I'm going to ask, whether it's two fifty or four sixty, doesn't really matter at this point due to the fact that I will offer two fifty, I would do that anyway. If that's what you all suggested I do, I will offer two fifty. But if I got to come back and he says three hundred and ten thousand, do I need to come back before the council and ask for another sixty thousand dollars?
We can meet in two hours. You know, it will not be a problem.
I have a question. Counselor Helen Harris, someone else is looking at that building too, and they're willing to go to four hundred thousand for it. So they're, someone else is looking at it as well.
Mr. Counsel, Counselperson Harris, could I ask who?
I know, they told me keep it a secret.
Well, the Blood Bank is looking at it. They have it off, I don't know what that, what that stands at right now. The Blood Bank. The Blood Bank.
Oh, the Blood Bank?
Yes.
And we most certainly would not want to have a blood bank right there in the mid part of town by the beautiful library, by the beautiful tower that's going up in our, in our mid-city area. We don't want that. And if they're willing to give more, then I really don't see anything with, with this. He's only asking to borrow up to four sixty. He's not saying that he's going to use it.
Exactly.
We just want to, and if someone is offering four hundred thousand for it, and we are, we are only asking for two fifty. I understand what you're saying, Counselor Kat, but I really don't see anything wrong with the fear that we have sitting here before us. Because he's not asking to spend as much at this particular time, just to have it there.
Right.
If we need it. But Counselor Kat said we can come back and meet at any particular time. But, you know, I just don't like a lot of if's.
In, in the motion that's up for the two hundred and fifty thousand, can we get the wording changed on the permission request to take out reserve account? Because that makes people think that it's coming out of this quote savings that the city has. And Counselor Kat, you're telling us that it's coming out of a capital fund? It's coming out of your, from my standpoint, and I'd have to get with Ms. Perry. But to me, the logical place for this to come from, because it will prevent you from occurring debt, you can, he can easily go borrow the money and then just repay it out of the account. So, but it's your debt repayment account that was set up in twenty nineteen. Can we get the wording changed on that permission request?
Before we do that, I'd like to, this is Lorraine Mohammed speaking, I'd like to ask our city treasurer his opinion on this.
That is a wonderful piece of property, especially in the future, if you could see us condemning the side stream, taking it all in. Two of the most passionate people right here. I agree. I looked at it the day they closed and told my wife, the city needs to own that. But we need to watch our money. The mayor spoke to Tracy. We have the funding for it. It's tight. You know, I'm a conservative when it comes to spending. I don't want to write a check that we can't cash, but it's that way. But right now, there is adequate funds. I wish we had a fixed amount where we could all just agree. Dealing with the bankruptcy court, there's no way we can. But I think it's a great investment. I would hate to see that property get out of our hands.
Right.
I mean, that prop, that store was built a year I was born.
Wow.
I mean, it's been sitting there that long, it's got limited parking. You know, it doesn't have a lot of retail value to somebody. Even the design of the building with columns in the middle, not a lot of value to it. But I think it would be one of the best assets that we could have.
So you think four sixty, just ask to borrow, do you feel, since you're our city treasurer now, do you feel that that is unreasonable, that amount?
I, I don't know. I would hate to tell you that, but I don't want the property to slip through our fingers, but I don't want to pay the maximum amount for it either.
Right.
You know, they're collecting money to repay old debts. I think two or three hundred thousand dollars will get their attention. But I don't know if we have competitive people, as Harry said, or competitive other bids on this property or not.
Let, let me ask this question, excuse me. If you approve up to four hundred and sixty thousand, submit two fifty. Is that fair? First off, I give City Attorney, he already wrote the letter. We changed the letter to two hundred and fifty thousand, and we are offering them that. And if they take two hundred and fifty thousand, that's fine.
So may I ask you a question? This is Lorraine Mohammed again. You said city attorney has already drafted a letter. In that letter, what was the specified amount?
Three hundred.
We had three hundred and fifty thousand in that letter, but that was just something that we had briefly discussed before, and there was no, you know, there was nothing to that figure necessarily. It was just a matter of, I mean, I'll tell you, the bankruptcy court's going to take the best offer they can get.
Right, right.
They're going to take the most money they can get, and they don't care what they're putting there. They're going to take the most money they can get for the creditors.
Well, we, let's say there were two people. Is there any chance we could get in a bidding war?
I don't...
Can we counter our offer if it's the lowest one?
I mean, that's something I can't answer without talking to people that are involved in that bankruptcy.
That's only fair, as that it would slip through our fingers.
But they are going to take the highest offer. That's not, I mean, they're not going to care what it's going to be. They're going to take the highest offer for the credit. You know, they don't care what the city wants to develop. They want the highest offer.
Oh, I know that. I was just saying, both sides are desperate to get this piece of property. That's one thing we all have in common, because, you know...
Well, this is Lorraine Mohammed again, for the record. I, as I said earlier, I don't see anything wrong with that four hundred and sixty thousand dollar figure. He's not asking to pay that amount. That's just basically like a negotiating, in my opinion, whatever is worth. That's more or less like a negotiating figure. And of course, two fifty seems a little low, and we've already established that it has no retail value, no nothing of that sort. And we don't want to be the lowest man on the totem pole, and we lose the property, and even if somebody offers it, offers more than four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we haven't lost anything because we won't get it.
Well, I'd be surprised if, if it's very much a bidding on this particular building in this particular area. You know, it could be, but I would be surprised.
I just look at it as a perfect opportunity, and like I said, the people of West Memphis elected me for my vision for the city, whether it's for another year and a half or the next eight years. And I just think that having this piece of property, I think we all agree, having this Fred building in our arsenal is going to be good for the city, now whether at what cost. So like I said, I can guarantee you, if I can get it for a dollar, I'm going to offer a dollar. I mean, take three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and keep it where it's at. But I will offer the two fifty, which is, if everyone comfortable with that, and hopefully that it won't be a bidding war, and if the judges come back, you know, and say, well, hey, that's too low, I want three fifty, then you all have given me up to three fifty. And I, and I would tell you all that he won't ask for a hundred thousand. I would just do it and not tell you. I mean, I have shown very much transparency and being fair as a mayor, I ain't doing nothing behind your back. I would tell you.
I would just like to say, just to have the money just in case, you know, just have it there where you won't have to have a meeting to get it, let it be available if he needs to use it.
Again, we're talking about something that we don't even know to be fact yet.
Right.
Based off the sales comparables that are out there, and the mayor and I have both looked at same set of numbers, I'm going to assume, if I'm trying to open up a business, I'm not going to pay any more than fair market value of what the sales data tells me. Well, the sales data tells me not to pay two fifty. The sales data tells me to pay a lower number because of the unknowns. So I think two fifty is a fair offer for the property. Personally, that's just me, though, based off of what I've already seen. And again, I don't think anybody else had a copy of that. And again, we'll get you a copy of it, but based off of the sales that have been occurring along Broadway, they were not that expensive. They were less than two hundred thousand. But I think it's a great piece of property for the city, so paying a small premium for it, I'm comfortable doing that, so.
If somebody come in there and really open up a real big business there, and we don't get it, something that we don't have, and right in the midst of the city too.
As city treasurer explained, when it comes to, if somebody was going to open up a retail business, they probably would not construct it that way, with all the problems that you have with the interior construction that was built, I think nineteen sixty-five, completely. It would not be built that way today if you were building a building. So it doesn't have a truly attractive, first thing anybody thinks, okay, how am I going to remodel this? Typically, is what anybody wanting to buy that property would say. Same thing we're saying, we're going to have to remodel it. But it's a matter of how we're going to do it, and I think in the long run, if it benefits city on the property, there's no ifs and buts about it. But I'm, just like everybody else, we want it at the most affordable price we can get it.
Yeah, that's right.
But, because this is not a project that you can, as the mayor indicated, he can't start building tomorrow.
No.
There's not a revenue source for it yet. We still have the council, we've got some things we'd have to do. There's some other things that this council's needing to look at in the next ninety days as to where you want the city to go, based off some of the things that the mayor and I have visited and talked about. So you're going to have to look at some options there also. But, you know, I agree, it is a desirable piece of property for us, more so than anyone else.
I have one quick question. I'll ask, this is Melanie Hudson. Tracy, do we know whether or not we have a, any type of property preservation company that's attending to the property right now? Do, are we aware?
Yeah, I don't know.
For the bank, do we know?
All I know is the previous occupant has been, apparently, and I hate to say this out loud, but it's obviously been losing money. So what's the first thing to do when you're losing money? You don't put it back in the building. You don't handle maintenance. You don't, all that just gets deferred and the building deteriorates. So whoever buys that knows there's going to be some repairs. It's just a matter of how much.
That's, yeah, that's why I was wondering.
Most people could acquire a piece of property if they're wanting to locate on Broadway for the same or less money, most likely less, based off the comps, so.
I have, this is Lorraine Mohammed again, I have one more question. You were saying that the property value, the sales property value along Broadway, from what you have researched, is two hundred and fifty thousand or less. But is it a building of that nature? We have a lot of properties on Broadway, they're a little bit of small buildings. So I just want to know what kind of comparison. I'm just asking because we've got to make this big decision. You said most of the properties along Broadway, during your research, were like two hundred thousand dollars or less. We have little small buildings that are along Broadway.
Let me see if I can pull that up on my email.
The same statue or, or...
It may be better to use a price per square foot.
Exactly.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we got to accommodate the price per square foot, and actually, the prices that have per square foot, we'll bring the building up to six hundred and fifty thousand.
That's why I asked that question. I know we have a lot of buildings on Broadway, but they're little small buildings. They're not buildings of that particular stature or magnitude.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And those buildings are, they're probably worth eighteen thousand square feet.
Okay.
But they're not that nineteen dollars a square foot, so.
The Fred's building at six oh six, he's Broadway, is seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight square feet. It's listed at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars list price, and lists thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cent a square foot.
I doubt it.
That's what that building is, thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cents square foot.
You have something to compare it to?
Well, the next building they have on it is the Anne's building, the empty Anne's building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At nine twenty East Broadway, which is sixty-five hundred and thirty-two square feet. At nine twenty East Broadway, which is sixty-five hundred and thirty-two square feet, is listed at one fifteen, a hundred and fifteen thousand, at seventeen dollars and sixty-one cent per square feet. What you look at is, is three times smaller than that building, and if you add it one fifteen three times, it would still be around three hundred and forty-five thousand for that Fred's building.
I think we should go, we'll see the permission request that we have on the agenda. That's just my opinion.
I mean, I agree with you one hundred percent, and like I said, I will offer the two fifty.
Is there another comparison?
The next one is the Sabre Buck, at eleven oh one Broadway, it's five thousand and forty square feet. It listed at a hundred thousand dollars, and it's at nineteen dollars and eighty-four cent a square foot.
Is that square footed?
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you, the square footage cost on a two thousand square foot dwelling will be higher than the square foot cost on a five thousand square foot. Because bigger does not always mean more, as far as square foot cost. So, so the larger you go, the number comes down. It just seems like that nineteen is around the number. So, and at eighteen thousand square feet, you know, again, with the repairs that are necessary, that's the reason why I asked for two fifty.
Eighteen thousand.
Because I think that's more than normal market.
Did you say nineteen dollars square feet?
That seems to be the number that keeps rolling around in there.
Well, I can tell you through my personal experience at dealing with bankruptcies and buying property for a company I used to work with, we got, everything that we did, we negotiated down less than half of the cost of the building that they wanted at the bankruptcy value, and got the properties and a company, whole company.
Three hundred and forty-two thousand, eighteen nineteen. So I just did the math on it, at nineteen dollars square feet, on eighteen thousand square feet, what the Fred building is, it comes to three hundred and forty-two thousand. And like I said, once again, I'm asking for the four sixty, but I will make the first offer of two hundred and fifty thousand, as is done by the council.
Do we not, do we, mayor, do we not have a motion on the floor already? Didn't we put a motion for the two fifty?
Well, we had a motion on the floor to approve the four sixty, then we had another motion on the floor to amend it to two fifty. So.
And mayor, if I may, that's where the two fifty somewhat is embedded, is off of that three seventy-four. Trying to expect new roof, new AC, that's how I came up with two fifty.
And that's awesome, but that's another option, because who says that we going to have to do that if they just say all of a sudden, a million dollars fall out of the sky? And we decide that we just going to build a new police station, and then they don't move from the station they currently in, till that went down. So we might not even have to do AC roofing. My goal is right now, trying to secure the facility. And I'm asking for the four, up to a four sixty now. As I'm going off of that, now I'm going to work with city attorney, and the budget chair, and the treasurer. And we see it three forty-two now, but if two fifty is what they agree that we all need to offer, we'll offer that, and then hopefully they come back and say, well, if we don't take that, hopefully they take it. But if they say we not going to take it, then we'll come up with another price. And I definitely will let this council know what number we come up with.
This is Patricia Lane, senior clerk. I'm just trying to, the first motion to approve that came from, who was the first?
That was Murray.
Okay.
Mr. Muhammad.
Okay.
But then another motion.
And then Tracy came back.
It was an amendment, but it was already a motion.
So we need to go with the motion before we?
Much before, just to approve the four sixty.
Amendment.
After.
Amendment.
Anybody second that?
I'll second it.
I seconded the two fifty.
Well, we have to do the, there was a motion already on the floor before we can even do the amendment.
No, I don't think there was a motion on the floor for the four sixty.
Well, the amendment is the motions on the floor, is the amendment of two fifty.
Now, they can vote the amendment up or down, and then approve the motion, the permission request.
Let me get all this straight, all right?
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion on the floor for two fifty.
You have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the permission request. I made a motion to amend that four sixty down to two fifty, received a second. So you would deal with that issue first, then you would give permission to the mayor, based off of whatever the end result is.
All right. And what I'm hoping is that we leave it at four sixty, but I will offer the two fifty that you all want first.
Again, can we change the verbiage and take out reserve account?
I ask that we handle one issue at a time.
That's all we can do.
First amendment, get that out of the way. We can then come back, deal with the second amendment, get that out of the way, then finally deal with permission request.
City clerk, what do you have on your record?
Okay, right now, there was a motion made to give permission for the mayor to borrow the four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and that came from Murray and Muhammad. Then Tracy came, excuse me, Councilor Cat came back and said, I would like to ask that we amend it to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we needed a second, and I thought it came from either Mr. Holt or Mr. Wheeler. I don't know which one. That's what I was trying to confirm.
It came from me.
No, it didn't. It came from this side, excuse me, council. It was either Holt or Wheeler. And so it was Mr. Holt, okay. Then we went into discussion, is what happened. And that's where we've been with Ms. Councilman Muhammad, asking the questions and the different conversations. That's where we got off at. So we just need to complete it. Discussion followed, and now where we going? Thank you.
Once again, I hope that we leave this at four sixty, just for the fact that if it is negotiating terms in this, and they go up to three hundred thousand, I can already offer three hundred thousand and come back and let this council know. But I will offer the two fifty, and hoping that they take that. That was my first offer. I'm not offering four, understand, I want the press to get this. I'm not offering four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the building. I'm going to offer two fifty for the building. And if they counter, I just want to be able to say, city attorney, let me know, will they offer back at two seventy-five? I mean, I should go ahead and do two seventy-five, instead of waiting two more weeks out, or trying to call a special meeting. But I will inform you all of what that number would be.
Mayor, I ask that we go ahead and call the roll on the two fifty amendment.
Okay.
Counselor Cat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Hope?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No.
Counselor Muhammad?
No.
Counselor Monday?
No.
Counselor Murray?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Four yeses. We have one extension, and one, two, three, four, no.
Well, the amendment, the amendment fails. All right, can you call the roll for the original vote on the, up to four hundred and sixty thousand?
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Cat?
No.
Counselor Crum?
No.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Hope?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Muhammad?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Well, that motion passes. So thank you all for giving me that permission to do that. And like I said, I'm a man of my word, and I will follow through with the two fifty.
I wanted to, again, make a statement on that. That's not a vote against you. You know how I am.
I understand.
But something happens to you tonight, I don't know who's going to be sitting in that chair. And I'm sorry. Now, I know who I'm dealing with now.
Yeah.
And, you know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like, I did this because I felt like that you will go with two fifty, and you will not move up to four sixty unless it's absolutely necessary.
I'm going to do the right thing. I will go do the right thing, do that, so, but I appreciate you all, too.
Yeah, we know you're going to do the right thing.
If he's here, he will.
Also, I have some more permission requests. Tori needs to destroy some files from two thousand and fifteen, and.
She called me like three weeks ago, and the same thing came up, and I went down there and took care of that one, so I'm going to expel myself from this one.
Well, can we, can I get a motion and second to add it to the agenda? Out of favor, I oppose. It's added. Okay, now, can I get a motion and second to destroy the two thousand and fifteen files?
Some more.
Out of favor, I oppose. Now, you normally pick someone.
I picked.
After the April thirteenth election.
Counselor McCrune.
After the April thirteenth election, we will pick someone.
Can I get a second? Out of favor, I oppose. Counselor McCrune, you will be the one that's overseeing, so you like destroying things.
Amen.
You'll be over that.
You can check everything they, they, they spread.
Also, I have no presentation. I do have a couple of announcements. This administration is getting ready to kick off its West Memphis cleanup. And one of the first things that I want to do, I want to try and partner with Ms. Muhammad, and see what Keep West Memphis Beautiful has together, because I know a lot of churches, the roads, the patrons have called.
Right, right. I've been, this is Lorraine Muhammad, I've been receiving communications about Keep West Memphis Beautiful, and the information that I've been receiving is all backwards. First of all, we need to register with Keep Arkansas Beautiful, that has not been done. Once we register with them, and let them know about how many volunteers we may have, then they will send us literature, gloves, T-shirts, the whole nine yards. The registration period has begun, and I just, I didn't know what was going on, because I've never had it done like this before. I know we've gotten dumpsters in the past. Last year, we didn't have it because of COVID, but I think this year it may be safe to have it. And I do have, I've already pulled down information from Keep Arkansas Beautiful, Keep America Beautiful, on safety tips and things of that nature. And if, as long as supplies last, they will send the T-shirts, the gloves, the bags, some paper grabbers and things of that nature, as long as they are available. I don't know how we got it all mixed up. I appreciate you so much, Wayne, I guess because you're chair over the Public Works Department, and I guess you just kind of took the wheel, but typically, that's not how we've done it. And I know I was to get with you, but I was on spring break last week, and trying my best to enjoy as much of it as I possibly could. But we're supposed to have a meeting, I think he's asked for one shortly after.
After this meeting, yes, ma'am.
But that's generally the way we do it, we put step by step by step by step. And as of yet, we have not registered, we haven't even set a date for it. Before we register, we have to have a date set and submit that date to the Keep Arkansas Beautiful. That doesn't mean, and arraign date as well, that doesn't mean we have to stick to that date. But in order for them to get us our supplies and all those things on time, then we need to submit a date to them.
Sounds like Counselor Muhammad is handling the administrative side of it, I'm handling grunt work. I like the grunt work.
What now? Handling the what?
Grunt work.
Oh, I've handled the grunt work for almost twenty years.
Twenty years. I know, I know.
I tell everybody, I was raised with seven brothers, and most people think I'm a boy, so. Whatever they did, I did. Climb on top of the house, go under the house, climb trees, just whatever. I'm rugged, y'all don't know that, I have a soft spoken voice, but don't mess with me, I'm rugged.
Well, I can tell you that we've already got approval for the dumpsters, and we also got approval to keep them longer than a weekend, so.
That's good.
All I need right now is the date and the locations. And the ward council representatives need to let us know what location to put them in, and we're going to decide on the date here in just a little while.
Ms. Crum?
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm doing dumpsters too, and you haven't got with me, so who paying for these dumpsters?
I didn't know I was supposed to get with everybody to do this. I thought it was just.
Well, let me ask you, who paying for it?
The county.
The county, okay, well, I'll let the county and y'all do that. Now, I'll tell you what the city though.
No, the county's doing this.
Okay, the city also, we doing our entire program. What we're going to do, Michael Bonner, the public works director, has agreed, starting April the fifth through the nineteenth, he's going to place four dumpsters on the outside, so any citizen can bring tires. You know, we have a problem with the tire issue within the city, that'd be to drop them off. And what we working with is who we've been working with, the EAPDD, and we can get the tires back out to the county, and they would get them out there. Also, we are doing dumpsters in four locations. Hold on, hold on. We're doing the tire pickup program. We working on those things where we can try to pick up tires. There's a lot of tires within our neighborhoods, and behind abandoned houses, abandoned fields, that we want to try and get that clean. As well as I'm working on some legislation with a little more teeth to try to hold, I'm not going to say it's to use tire dealers, but just, there's more things in place to hold some accountability for manifests and different things like that. But I'm going to wait to city attorney to get that information back to me, and to see what we're going to do. Also, from April the fifth through April the nineteenth, we are placing dumpsters. One dumpster will be in front of the West Memphis Christian School. One in the Roberto neighborhood, Jackson parking lot. The third one will be at the Mayfair parking lot in Warford. And the fourth one will be at the Eugene Ward Civic Center, so definitely, we'll be doing it there. Also, we're going to be picking up trash, things that probably that we don't normally do, but I have given them authorization, probably cut some trees down that normally we may not, was possibly done, but we'll look at what's applicable, and we'll go from there. But right now, we're going to try to make sure we get our city cleaned up. And I'm also going to say this to our citizens, we want you all to play a part, because the city cannot keep the city clean on its own. The citizens have to play a part, even if it's just getting out in your own yard, and picking up loose trash, or you got tires, or different things like that. Help us out, bring them down here to the city shop and drop them off, or, you know, on your day that we have the gravel trucks around, make sure you take advantage of it, you know, because these two weeks, we'll be working a little over, and doing everything that we can to work to keep the city clean, but we're going to need the help and support of the people as well.
So Mayor McClinton, why can't we merge all of this into one?
That's why I want to meet with you, so that we can make it all happen.
And council, the chairperson of the Public Works, just try to merge it all into one big cleanup.
I'd love to make that work with you.
Okay, we could, and of course, everybody in their ward would be responsible for trying to get the word out, that was a great idea that Chairperson of Public Works, Crum, came up with, that each person in their ward, you know, kind of be responsible of the areas that they know need cleaning the most. Whereas heretofore, I would run around all over town trying to get designated locations to be cleaned. But if each person in their ward would just submit a location that you, or locations that you think really need to be cleaned most, and try and garner volunteers out of your ward, and that would make it a lot better. But as far as the keep, if you're going to go with the Keep Arkansas Beautiful, Keep America Beautiful program, as we have typically done, then that's something totally different. But if this is just a citywide cleanup, the city of West Memphis will be providing gloves and bags and all those things. If it's going to be just a city-wide cleanup, and not the initiative through the Keep Arkansas America Beautiful initiative.
Well, I would love to do it the best way, you know, we can make it work if we go through Keep West, I mean, Keep Arkansas Beautiful, whatever way for it to clean up all of the pickup.
Right.
It's me.
So I guess.
And I know a lot of people have been asking, and I know you have spearheaded that for twenty years, so I ain't trying to reinvent the wheel, so that's why I want to get with you and see how we can do it.
The reason we're doing it through the county is because we don't have any cost. The cost for the dumpsters, the county absorbs that, so that's why we're doing it through the county. I don't know what our city's paying for them, but.
Counselor Crum, if I don't mind, I don't want to discourage you in the least bit. Discouragement of any sort is a very bad feeling, and can bring a person's morale down so quickly. But if we.
I'm good with it.
If we, if we got the dumpsters from the county, and the city got dumpsters, that means we could put them in more locations for a greater cleanup. So I don't see anything wrong with.
And then I can't depend on the county to keep my city clean, and so it's administrative, it's my job to work with this governing body to make sure that we keep West Memphis clean. But we'll take any other support we can from the county.
Well, if all this was known upfront, it would have, it would have solved a lot of issues. I didn't know that, that we didn't want free dumpsters, so.
The thing you got to do is just communicate with the mayor. Then you got to do it, just communicate with the mayor. Uh, instead of always coming over the way to fight against it. Uh, we have no citizen request, can I get a motion and second to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Out of favor by I?
Councilor Crum, where do you want us?